...comes out of the village manager's office. I'll give a brief overview of the process. And I think the board is familiar with a lot of this, but I think for those people in the audience or residents who may be watching from home, I think the bear is mentioning. The summer of 2010, members of the village management staff referred to the mayor about an initiative titled the Illinois Municipal Assessment Program through the Northern Illinois University Center for Governmental Studies. And in particular, they have a Governance and Management Practices Assessment, which I'll refer to as the GMPA, just to brevity sake. Now, the GMPA is similar to previous endeavors that the village has undertaken to get an outside perspective on how we go about our provision of local government services. In the past, I've used the example of the 2003 Technical Assistance Panel that was carried out by the Urban Land Institute. On the board, we recall that we took those recommendations, we implemented a lot of them. I don't know that we implemented all of them, but by and large, we got a real good feedback from an outside unbiased source to give us perspective and a real expertise. It's one thing to ask somebody to come in and give you their perspective, but not know what they're talking about. So, the Technical Assistance Panel did that for us. We believe that the GMPA does the same thing, but it takes a larger look at overall village services versus just the downtown redevelopment project. After bringing the topic to the board last fall, in September, the board took official action with a resolution to commit to and actively participate in the GMPA process. That's part of their official application as we sought their services. The several months since, the GMPA review team has conducted interviews with various stakeholders across the community. Sessions were conducted at Village Hall across the first two weeks of October. In addition to that, they conducted tours of the community, and they requested a comprehensive list of village documents to look at. Surprisingly, you may find that some of the stuff that we provided them aren't necessarily common in other places. The things they looked at included our budget, audit, comprehensive plan, personnel, manual union contracts, and various planning studies and communications to our residents. In follow-up to the interviews, they facilitated a workshop with the village board. You may recall that the first week of January. And really, it was a roundtable discussion wherein they shared their preliminary findings. And based on some of the stuff that was shared with us, we put together some feedback, some of it extensive, and those items were followed, were forwarded back to the folks within NIU as they continued to do their due diligence and to get some further clarification on some of the things going on in Park Forest. As part of the process, stakeholders were invited to attend tonight's meeting. I hope that some of them will either be showing up or will be watching from home, televising live. And our presentation for this evening, we have two representatives from the GMPA team, Brad Townsend and Dawn Peters. Mr. Townsend is the Executive Vice President and Financial Advisor with Allers and Associates. Prior to his tenure with the firm, he worked for 25 years as a city manager, a village manager, and a director. Mr. Thompson works with the NIU Center for Governmental Studies, municipal governing and management assessment projects. Dawn Peters joined the Center for Governmental Studies way back in 2001 as a research associate, and she has been with them ever since. She's now the Assistant Director at the Center for Governmental Studies. She's additionally the Executive Director of the Illinois City and County Managers Association, and also with the Illinois Institute for Local Government Law. Just to let the public know, to remind the board as far as our costs, there is a fee that's associated with the study. That's a $5,000 cost. It is allocated for the third year's budget, so under Strategic Planning Services, Board of Trustees line item. Typically, the cost is anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000, but because of private funding partnerships established by the Center for Governmental Studies, Park Forest's cost for this study has been defrayed by upwards of 60 to 70 percent. For residents who may be looking for copies of the report, we have them provided in the back of the room, bound copies. And then for residents who are watching from home, who will watch this board meeting after it's been taped and reshown, it will also be available on the Documents Center tab of the village website above our other financial planning documents over the past several years. With that, I'd like to turn over the presentation to the folks from NIU. And I think just for clarity for the board, we'd like to let them go through the entire presentation. A lot of what you may have seen, or when we talked about, is stuff that we discussed with the workshop in early January. So, I'd ask that maybe we let them go through the entire presentation. If you happen to have a question, they may get to it at a further point in their presentation. Once they get through it, then we'll bring up to questions across the place. With that, Dawn, if you want to take the lead?
All right. Thank you, Tom. It's a little bit warmer. Days are getting a little longer than when we were here in January. It's a good sign. As Tom said, we were able to help defray some of the costs by some of our iMap sponsors, Pine Garden Jenkins, Christopher Burke Engineering, and Allers, with Brad being a member of Allers. So, we appreciate that support, so we're coming to communities and do this type of study. As you know, and what was so impressive to us when we came into the community is you obviously have a long history of action and planning, and you've been very proactive throughout your history. And for that, you are definitely, definitely to be commended. You're a full-service community. You actually do a lot more than some communities do as far as your parks and recreation, but your public safety, public works. You guys are doing a lot of things right. And again, we will go over a lot of this in our report. But one of the things that we like to point out are the findings that we had through our interviews, through touring the town, and some of the feedback we got. And, you know, it's definitely a small-town feel and atmosphere. There's been a history of community pride through many of your rich cultural events that you've put on in the community throughout the years. There's a lot of civic involvement and energy. Your government has been very transparent, accessible, responsive. We, you know, had dinner tonight, talking to the mayor and Tom, and talking about your neighborhood meetings, and not a lot of communities are doing that. And you are to be commended. It's such a great asset to know that your elected officials and department heads are out there listening to you and the public, and getting the feedback, and being responsible and accessible for that. You have high-quality services. Your police department, your fire department are all very strong, and to be commended on that. Your community embraces the diversity that it has. Again, you have a very dedicated and professional staff, a long history of professionalism here in Park Forest. And then another thing that we saw as an asset that in a minute will also be a liability, but is there is land available. You have a lot of opportunity for new development, for redevelopment, and you have an ability to shake your future for what you want this community to look like and to be. And for a community that is landlocked, that's not always something that you have the option to do. So, that we see as a great asset. Some of the liabilities, as I said, you have a lot of property for redevelopment, which means they're not maybe generating the tax dollars that you'd like to see. So, that's the flip side of that. And in this economy, it is difficult for development, but we're hoping that we have some ideas for that later in the report. We did hear some concern about the property taxes, knowing that the municipality is only a portion of property taxes, and that other taxing bodies do make up that property tax bill. We do realize that. But nonetheless, we did hear that in our interviews, but I encourage people to really study their property tax bills and understand what the percentages are that are municipal versus school versus other taxing bodies. The lack of diverse land use, again, that kind of goes back to the redevelopment, development, vacant properties. We do see that the retail base has been providing less sales tax revenue, again, in a down economy with the vacancies that are in downtown. We do see some opportunity for that, hopefully with the economy turning around. And then the other issue that we saw was that, you know, the public schools seen as some standard. Not all schools were seen as this way, but there was some concern with some of the schools. Again, the abandoned properties. The tax inequality between the cooperatives and standard housing was definitely an issue that was brought up. This is maybe a little bit broader than what the municipality can tackle, and it does get down to the state legislature and tax laws, and is a very complicated issue, but it is one of the findings and some of the concerns that we saw. There was also some concern of the new residents who have come in that don't have that history of community involvement and engagement that you're so proud of, and trying to incorporate them into the community and bring them in to the events that you have, getting them to volunteer, we saw as a concern. And then, of course, going back to the minimal retail and industrial development. And what we have, and I'm going to turn this one over to Brad. Brad is our resident expert in municipal governance, and he did many of, or he did all of the key document reviews. As an ex-city manager, he has the breadth of knowledge needed to do that type of expert review and analysis. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brad.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to mention that in the document, anybody that wants to get a, they should say the clip notes version, as they used to say, or the shorthand version, actually on page one, that was something actually that your village manager asked us to do, was to put a synopsis in that. When you get a chance, take a look at that. And anybody who maybe is listening or watching this meeting or later on, take a look at that. That gives you a real good sense of what we saw, what you see in Park Forest. We'll go into a little more detail, though, as we go on. Getting back to this key document review that Dawn mentioned, there were quite a few that we looked at. I was just amazed, and just impressed, the team, by the number of documents that have been produced over the years, that the various members of your staff and this current village board, the past village boards, have you to carry out your business here, serving the people of Park Forest. And that was a lot to go through, I must say, but it gave us a real good perspective, even before talking with the different people that Tom mentioned earlier that we interviewed and that Dawn referenced. Just the documents themselves are very revealing as to what the village, over the years, considered would be important. And not only what you thought was important, but what you planned and what you worked on and actual follow-up. The one thing I must say that these documents told me was that not only does, is there a tradition here of carefully considering what it is that you want to do, or trying to deal with issues that may be brought to you in the community, but you do it carefully, you do it with as much expertise as you can to bring to the fore the options, the alternatives that you can consider. But you don't let all those ideas and options and information cause you to bog down generally. I mean, you may not feel that way. Some nights, when you have a lot of discussion, you may not know where to go, or where something's going ahead. But the record shows that you do that kind of deliberate process you have, your predecessors have, and that you actually act on it, and that there has been an ability to carry this out with your policy direction from the board level all the way through over a period of time. Now, that may sound to some people, maybe here in the town, as, let's take that for granted. That is not the norm, I can tell you that. I have been a manager of communities that have functioned well. I've been in dysfunctional situations. So, I know what I'm speaking of, and I'm not going to go down and tell stories and get into that. But the fact is that in order to be able to do that, it takes some consistency and leadership and support of the leadership over time, and communication and support from the public over time to make something happen. And what I've seen in the communities that I've worked with that are highly functional is that ability, more than anything else. The ones that seem to struggle, that can't quite get over the hump of this and that and the other thing, a lot of times is because they do not have continuing, ongoing kind of carrying on of their thought process and their policies. It doesn't mean everybody has to agree on everything. That's not what I'm saying. Healthy debate is also part of it, but it's just the idea that you get back to the point after you've talked everything, or you get back to the point that something needs to be done. And I see in here, in these documents, our record, that that's what you do. So, I'm not saying this to make you feel good. If you do feel good from hearing it, that's great, but we're just trying to tell you what we see and what we're hearing, and in particular, in this section of our report, what we read. So, where does that come out? Well, it comes out in the various strategic planning and policy statements that you've carried out. And where are we at with the slide? That's probably the first one here. I'm backwards. There it is. Strategic planning and policy statements. I've already talked about, you know, your long history of innovation. So, we're just saying, you know, continue to do that kind of thing. And the only thing that we really have recommended to you that might help you take it to a higher level, and also perhaps continue your tradition of communicating and having, you know, open information to the public, would just be to adopt a tracking matrix in which we have a sample. That's another thing we do with these reports. We try to give you some practical examples that you might be able to adopt. That Dawn and I were talking about, sometimes we get feedback on these studies that some feel that's the best part of the report, at least is a really good part of the report, because they can take something and maybe adapt it to their situation. You may not take all these and use them, but this one was a appendix, what is it? Hold it.
G.
Appendix G, thank you. Another one was, yeah, the overall. Now, here's something that I like to emphasize whenever we go through this, and that is that we do not only look at the documents pertaining to policy direction, but we also look at some of the mundane things, like your personnel policies, procurement policies, that type of thing that is very important to your staff and to you, or maybe the general public doesn't think much about, but it's all part of good business practice, to promote consistency, to manage professionally. And this is all part of, not only actual carrying out of the business, but remember, one of the things that is stated near the beginning of this report is that the practice's assessment is to help identify how you either are doing business, or can you improve on doing business in a way that can better equip you to improve upon or initiate economic vitality. So, this is something that businesspeople care about, look at. One thing I've learned over the years is that good prospects, even like, you know, like that new tenant you're talking about earlier in this meeting, and other ones that we talked about during the interview process, that have been a big part of your reinventing of your downtown area. People actually care about how you conduct business, because they, how you conduct business gives them an indication of what their relationship might be with you. So, it may seem like a boring thing to talk about procurement, or look at procurement activities, or policies, and that type of thing, but anybody that, any businessperson that's worth their salt will want to know, and will actually watch and see how you conduct your business, how you talk to them, how promptly you get back to them, whether you actually listen to them or not. Those are things that may seem very fundamental and basic, and they are, but they are very important. Nothing will turn away a prospect quicker than somebody who feels like you're just not responding and dealing with them in a business-like professional way as quickly or as timely as they need, because they have plenty of other places to go. There is somebody that knows how to do that. And that's a lot of times why I feel bad when some of the communities that are a little bit dysfunctional, they actually lose ground more and more because they don't turn it around and get their act together. So, that's why I'm really been happy to be part of these studies, because I really truly believe the feedback we've gotten, we actually have helped some of these communities who have those kind of problems. You're in a different situation. You're at a level where you're up here, you're not down here, and you want to go even higher up. So, nevertheless, that still plays in this situation. Same thing with your budget. Now, you have the GFOA designation as a Government Finance Officers Certification. You've got plaques there on the back wall regarding that. You have the same thing regarding your audit, which I show on this screen. Again, you have the GFOA designation. Of course, we talked to Mary Dankowski about this, and how she and the staff and all of you have been a big part of getting those kind of recognitions. Well, that's again, part of good business practices. I think the only thing we mentioned here was two different, there's one thing in particular that, back to the budget. We just suggested that in addition to all the budgeting and discussions that you have now, like those two big summits you have each year, would be to carry out a, what I call a multi-year work, budget worksheet, where not only do you look at this upcoming year, but you try to project outward. That's something that can be done. Of course, it's a decision process as to how you're going to go about it, but it could, it can be done by in-house staff. Certainly, you have staff here with the expertise to be able to do that. They select certain assumptions going forward in terms of inflation, other factors, other factors such as what you anticipate changes on the cost side, like wages, salaries, benefits of your staff. The other thing we like to see in one of these documents is also capital needs. So, this isn't just looking at income and expenses, this is looking at operations and capital, which I mentioned, which I get into on the next slide here. So, we're just saying, consider doing that. Some places do not have the ability to do that because they don't have, and this may be the case here. Your staff may be at the max right now. I don't know. Sometimes, even if the staff can do it, they want an independent source to just do it on an outsourced basis, just to help, or even help get it started. So, again, we have a sample of that in appendix E. Mentioned the capital improvements plan. You do have a multi-year capital improvement wishlist and needs, so we're just saying, you know, continue to do that. We were particularly impressed with your policy direction and staff follow-up on grants. And I know, and so is Dawn, that this has definitely allowed you to proceed with some projects that you might not have otherwise. So, if you can find the right match and the right fit with the grant to what you need, that's great, and follow up on it. I know that's something that has been going forward in the works area and elsewhere, so I would say keep that going, because you're on a good roll. Debt management policy and investment policy, those are, you know, like the opposite side of the same coin. In regard to debt management policy, you do have a statement in your annual budget concerning this, and our look of the portfolio that you have indicates to us that you have good management of your short, long-term debt, how it fits into the way you conduct your operations and planning of your capital. The only thing we suggested on this, that you just step it up a little bit on that with a standalone or complete debt management policy, I think of that, we also provided a sample as an appendix F. And we want to do it exactly, but here's an idea of what we're talking about there. And it really wouldn't be anything outside of what you're doing already, just be a little more specific and include a little more detail, that's all concerning that. And the investment policy, really most good, as to what you're doing here, like I said, your portfolio is very good, and you're using excellent practices and policy, as far as we can tell. Given the limitations we all have now in terms of investments, it's not the greatest time. It's a great time maybe to issue debt if you need to, because rates are low and bids on contracts are low-priced, but then, of course, the other side of that coin is on investments, you're really going to get minimal, especially if you're still in cash to keep things going. So, it's always a balancing act between that liquidity question of cash flow versus investment is always there. On your insurance situation, and this is the risk management part of your insurance, all the lines of coverage, general liability and automobile, or vehicle fleet and all that, you're with the Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, and we're, as far as we're concerned, that's a good association to continue with, where you have that combination of insured and self-insured layers of coverage. Just periodically check the market to ensure that it is the best. That's pretty much a standard recommendation to make, whether someone's part of the Illinois Municipal League Pool, or even if they have a real stamp. We always say, don't just take it for granted, everything's okay. Check it out, and Irma won't feel bad about it. Irma won't cry over that. She'll be okay. All right. So, that really covers, you know, all the documents that we looked at. Overall, very good. Now, this part here, Dawn and I will both be going through, depending on what the topic is. We call this Opportunities for Success. And this is the one that our team really, I think is the most fun part of what we do because, and I think I may have mentioned this back in January, it gives us that chance to kind of sit back. We're not, we're not in the confines of the interview format. We're not in the confines of the document review category. We're able to just sit back and say, okay, now that we've seen all this, and we've heard all of this, what really makes sense? What, you know, what kind of creative or even straightforward kinds of strategy and tactics should we recommend that will really be useful, that you can either act on now, or at least or maybe act on over a period of time? So, that's what this is about. Okay, Public Relations and Community Branding. Is that me? Okay. All right. Okay, that's right. Okay. This is the one where, now, you know, our opinion, I would have been right off the bat, that our, that this is, this has definitely an element of subjectivity to it, no question about it. But we just offer as being people who come in, who came into your town, you know, we don't live in your town, we don't generally do business in your community, although we're certainly happy to be here tonight, and have been happy to be working with you the last several months. But we were able to come in and just say, you know, kind of sit back, go, okay, what's our impression of the theme, or is there a theme or brand to Park Forest? And we do see in the physical attributes, in terms of driving around the community, and looking at all of your various kinds of publications, your website, other ways that you communicate internally and externally, we do see that there's a brand. We do understand, I think, some of the history of Park Forest. And I'll just throw in a couple of things. One, the history of civic involvement by your residents and businesspeople. The, and I knew this from when I was a village manager in Will County years ago, that Park Forest has a tradition of being a leader and innovator in different governance and service areas. So, we, we think that that is embedded in this branding process that all of you talked about. Now, this is a good example of something that the feedback you gave us, and there's other examples you might think of before we're going here tonight, where when we had that meeting back on January 5th, and then even afterwards, you know, it was pointed out to us, you had been through this branding process, and you were underway with it, so we better understood it after that meeting. So, again, I think that was really good that we had that preliminary finance meeting. At the same time, though, we're, I guess I'll just say this, we, we think there could be more done, or maybe stepped further into presenting this brand than maybe what you've done. Not only in your communications and on the website, but perhaps in the, in the physical presentation of your community as people come and go in. So, we're just saying, don't go back and reinvent the wheel on this. You already seem to be embedding those traditional kinds of what we understand Park Forest is all about, but just take a fresh look at how it's being implemented. We understand that there could be limitations in terms of your financial ability to do things, or the timing of things, getting cooperation from other things, or the timing of things, getting cooperation from other parties that you don't have certainly control over, but just take a fresh look at how it's being implemented. And we get into that a little bit into the report, what that means, signage, the, and you're going to get into the website a little bit later, I think, and maybe your publications and even how you use social media, just any kind of images. It's not just a logo being out there, it's any meeting you go to, any presentation that you have a representative, there needs to be something that definitely says, you know, this is Park Forest, Park Forest is in the house, and it matters that you're there. So I know that probably sounds a little fuzzy and a little bit opinionated, and yes, it is, but that's where we're at right now.
And one of the other things that we looked at was the website, and you have a lot of information on your website, which is wonderful, but I, we think that, and one example is like the downtown, we think that it could be enhanced where it could be more vibrant and more welcoming to the community, because when you go to it currently, it goes to lease opportunities. And that doesn't say to anybody, here's a great downtown, come visit us. It, you know, kind of gives the image of, we need people downtown, come lease with us. And while you still want that information out there, we give a few examples of some other websites that have a multitude of information about dining opportunities and shopping opportunities and events that are happening downtown, and you know, you have this new co-op opening, you could be highlighting that on your website. One of the other things, you're already doing the Facebook and things, but I did include, we did include in the very last article, and I ran across this, I think after I'd been here in January even, was just an interesting article about how some communities and regions are using Facebook and YouTube for economic development, where they're having CEOs in their community actually do testimonials about what a benefit it is to do business in Park Forest or whatever community they're in. So it's just another twist on the use of social media, it's not so much out there for maybe everybody, but it's more targeted social media at economic development endeavors. So that's the last article that's in your, thank you, appendix H, I don't have the appendix here with me. So those were just some other ideas that we wanted to throw out there to help you, A, enhance the website, maybe getting a consistent template throughout the website, and then some other ideas about social media and the use of it for economic development efforts aside from just promoting events within the community.
Yeah, one thing that we also learned after that, from feedback, especially from your staff after that last, I should say, the first presentation in January, was that you do have Park Forest out there on different industrial and commercial websites, you have your staff checking those sites, there's definitely, the virtual world, you do have a presence out there so that there's an opportunity for people to know about Park Forest, that use that way, looking for places to do business. So that's a big plus, and I'm glad that all of you brought that to our attention. Okay, this is the balanced land use and taxation strategy. This one here gives me an opportunity to offer my thoughts on another, what I consider to be another truism that's based upon my years of experience, and that is that communities, especially, it really came out, it's really kept me between the eyes the last couple of years, especially when I was working in cities and villages that in different ways were navigating this great recession, I wasn't going to say it, I don't think we say the great recession on these slides, but I'll just say it. In every, different communities were affected in different ways. But one thing that I did see, and that is that the more diverse the land use, and this kind of goes back to even the Planning 101, you know, the mix of commercial, residential, industrial slash research and development. Those communities that had a more balanced, meaning the percentage of each of those land uses were more or less equal to each other, if not one-third, 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 you know, some percentage where there's a significant amount either in the land use itself or in the revenue generation on those properties, those communities seemed to weather this great recession better than the ones that were heavily in one direction or another. So I mean, it's the obvious one, you know, you see it in the mainstream media, you see it driving down the street yourself, and that is these communities that were heavily into, well, you lived through this, the regional mall, those were the regional mall that had a big drop in their sales taxes, or those communities that had a heavy reliance on auto dealership, sales taxes, they were at the worst. Well, it seems like common sense, but what we're trying to say here, it isn't just a matter of observing that, it's pointing out that anything you can do to try to get that diversity. So we are basically saying, you know, continue to seek your residential and commercial prospects, which you have had success doing that, and we want to do more, I know you have a lot more than you'd like to see happening. But we also know that you targeted specific areas in town for your industrial base, even back to your original comprehensive plan, it was stated that you should be looking for that, and that hasn't always happened over the years to the extent that you would like it to. It is still, let's face it, out of those three major categories that I'm calling, you know, diversity of land use, that is your, that is your least in number in generation of revenue. So we know that there is an effort out there, that your staff and others, who already told you, you know, how you're doing that in different ways, to improve that and increase that. So we'll just say, continue that, you know, even look at some of these commercial sites, maybe even the areas that are now vacant, that were once commercial, maybe industrial or at least light industrial or research and development might be a possibility there. Just continue to pursue those prospects and hopefully you'll get some results in the next couple of years because, you know, the rules have changed, the situation's changed, and I think there's going to be some opportunities there that you just didn't see before that you're going to have, so just continue to be ready to do it.
One of the other things that we recommended was an update of the comprehensive land use plan. This gives you an opportunity to bring the community together and set a community vision for land use throughout in, with all the vacant property that you do have and the golf course that is, you know, now a prime opportunity, the transit-oriented design down by the metro station, and they all provide opportunities for you to come together, define your land use so that developers know what the community vision is moving forward with your land use strategy. We do understand the expense of it, but doing an update to it, we, you know, we still think it would be a worthwhile venture. It just can identify, like I said, there are new ways and new ideas to bring diversity in land use to the community. So Brian, do you have more to add?
No, not specifically on this slide, but I think the next one probably carries forward into that economic development, tax and financing, we say yes, it would be a segue to that. We know you have the long-time experience with Tiff District Downtown, you also have that with the more of the center Tiff District area. We're of the opinion that you, you know, given that you have 10 years more on the downtown thing, you know, off the top of my head, I cannot remember how much time you have left on the other one. What is that, Mary?
Eighteen years.
Or, is that right? Okay, that's, that's pretty good, that's a pretty good length of time. We're just saying, take a fresh look at what you're doing with the number of years you have remains on those two sites, and you may even look at other areas in town for special incentive assistance. And what we have in mind is something that, like Tom had mentioned in the introduction, we have the Urban Land Institute people here, that either with a Tiff advisor and/or a focus group like that, take a fresh look at it, as to what you might want to be doing going forward. Maybe that would be something more applicable to the more of the center perhaps in downtown because maybe you feel like you're already well-established with the way you're approaching downtown, or you could look at both. And just, you know, brainstorm about, you know, some ideas on what you might want to do going forward. If you can get that kind of good feedback, we think that that's about going forward. And it may be something that you want to do sometime in the next year or so. And then while you're doing that, continue, or even before that, continue to communicate with your extensive network of contacts, like the ones that your staff pointed out to us, that you have, that you reach out to, and that you continue to have communications with, just like we were talking about here tonight.
Intergovernmental relations. I heard earlier in the evening when I was talking to Tom and the mayor, that you do these wonderful neighborhood meetings, but sometimes issues are brought up that are out of your jurisdiction. And I think you could really strengthen the community engagement if you could bring in and forge bonds with leaders of other local governments, including the school districts, bring them in, maybe for a session where you talk about the village mission and you understand what their mission is and see where your commonalities exist, and involve them in some strategic planning sessions. We know that this can sometimes be difficult to build bridges that maybe haven't existed in the past, but we're suggesting that maybe you take that first step in trying to reach out to some of these other local governments and, you know, starting small and trying to build and maybe get some, you know, small successes first to build upon, but we just feel like it could really strengthen the community overall if all of the local government bodies were working together towards a common vision and making the community a stronger
Okay, shared services. This one really is something that I think was one of the first ideas that just popped into our head that we think really is applicable to Park Forest because of the wide range of services that you do provide, the very proactive involvement you have in development in your community, you know, the properties, the various services across a wide range. We already know, for example, that regionally, the communication center serves the public, your Aqua Center, and we're just saying that, consider, since you have these services, these great assets of your ability to provide something that people actually want, that you might explore the further extension of public health, police patrol investigations, fire protection prevention and recreational events. You may be doing recreational now already to an extent in terms of promoting and advertising, but this is something we think you ought to seriously consider because, you know, a different team could have come in here and said to you that, you know what, during these tough times, maybe you ought to actually retrench on what you're doing. And I don't think we didn't talk about that in our team, we did. We thought, well, wait a minute, what should we really say here? But after looking at this, especially going back to Dawn's review of the assets and liabilities, we felt like, well, you know, that's not a recommendation we, our team wants to make. We feel like you ought to continue to build on what you have and view this great recession, you know, and everything else that goes with it, and maybe other challenges that you're facing, as just, you know, the natural part of what you have to deal with. And take an optimistic, positive viewpoint, one that's couched in careful business considerations. And so that's why we're making this recommendation, it's pretty basic. And I think the other reason we're bringing this recommendation to you is because, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily think of this with other clients we've had for this particular study, because you do have, as we mentioned earlier, that tradition of being a leader in the region and in the Chicago metro area on community fronts. So this is not a new concept really to you in terms of looking at ways to perhaps on a regional basis extend and thereby not only extend the quality, but the cost-effective nature or factors of the service you're providing. So I guess it's the idea that maybe higher volume of service could possibly be at lower cost per unit. We didn't do that kind of in-depth study, cost-per-unit study, cost analysis, we didn't do that, that was beyond the scope of this study. But we felt there were enough factors there that indicated that was a possibility to bring your attention. So we stand by this recommendation, we feel comfortable and very positive about stating this. Could possibly increase your interest rate too, that's the other thing you can try to bring up here, but you'd have to balance that with the potential cost. And it's, no, we didn't.
You can mic him.
Right. By the way, I really liked that entry, Marjorie, so we had to get a picture of that and get it in the report somehow. That is another photo? This is the cover page photo. Well, we've already talked about your great traditions of civic involvement, leadership and staff and, I mean, I won't keep going on because I don't want you to think we're trying to butter you up on that. You're living with both the good and bad economic times that have happened, and the mix of that is happening right now, there's no doubt about it, and you've had times of stability and changing population, now it's changing again. So we're just saying, continue to embrace your tradition of awareness and proactive attention to community issues, and then please consider some of the things that we, actually we'd like you to consider, all the things that we're recommending, but at least try some of the things that we're recommending as possible enhancements, or if not new ways, possible new ways of doing business as referenced in this report. And I'll just say, and you can certainly add in too, Dawn, we really appreciate this opportunity, and one thing we always like to say, and I believe we say in the final paragraph of the report, that not, not every board or staff of a municipality would even want to have outsiders like us come in and take a look and tell you what we think you ought to be doing, or tell you the good and bad and ugly of what we think is going on. So we commend you for that, but I know that's not the first time you've had people come in, so again, with you, it's not new brand, but nevertheless, every time you do it, there's still, you know, it's taken a risk, and that's, you're already be commended for that. And we thank you for giving us that opportunity to deal with you and to talk with you about this, and are certainly willing and open to continue talking with you in the future if you have any questions about this report.
Okay, well, thank you both very much. I do think it's healthy for us to have outsiders looking at us a lot and telling us, and we've gained a lot from.